...to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and there is a testing of all.
Director of the Board, thank you for... Dear heaven and father, we're thankful that we live in front of you and we have the many blessings that you've given us over the years in protection. We just know, Lord, that you love all of us and that we know that we want to do those things that are best for the residents. So I hope this, Lord, in this meeting, that we can have a good conversation, we can go into business and make sound decisions for our residents. We ask this in your name.
The Council of the Board responds.
Yes. I've been busy. First of all, I want to give you a little snippet here as a... I am a representative on the Forties County Land Bank Board. We meet like once every three months. And it says, "We are happy to announce that we have received an auditor of state award for their 2023 audit." And Dan Morgani is the director. And he says, "This recognition is a testament to our team's dedication to financial accountability and transparency." So that's a big affirmation. Would you shut up? And another thing, I've been thinking about this, and I have an opinion. I don't know if anybody else has the same opinion. That's quite all right, but if you don't, this is what my opinion is. When a resident calls me with the issue, then whatever that is, the first thing I do is I go to the department head and say, "Hey, this resident contacted me. What do you know about this?" I work with that and I try to get, I try to get the answer within 48 hours and give back to them. Now, what has been happening is the person, hypothetically, the person calls me, then hangs up, and then he calls every department head, and then he calls Jenny. He calls Holly. He calls all of us. They all do the same thing that I do. So here what we're doing is we're wasting time. If you call me and you don't like my answer or you don't know what I have found out, then that time, take the next step. Don't call 10 people and we're all out there running around, scurrying around, trying to get your answers, leave back to you, all to that one person. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sue.
Nick, anything we can do in a few minutes?
I'm ready.
Hey, today we have a meeting guest. Emily Headner and Jonathan Ayers. Or Charlie Hyrum.
Ooh, that's a nice response. So Emily and I are stopping by. We were asking you an update of how things going at the branch. I brought numbers. Emily brought stories. So she's got the fun part of it. But from a statistics perspective, I've got to tell you, they're only being open since January. That branch is absolutely killing them. They have, as of yesterday, checked out 17,802 items to patrons, which we've got six branches at this point. Now, we've got Brimfield open. Three of them are open 48 hours a week. Three of them are open 56 hours a week. Of the ones that are open 48 hours, which generally are smaller sized branches, Brimfield's leading of all of those. They've answered over 1,300 reference questions since they opened up in January through the end of June, helped 229 people with computers. They've had 95 programs and 2,095 attendees at that, at those programs. Now, I mentioned with six branches, that's the second highest of any of our branches, even the larger ones. So it's nice to see the people are coming out to use the library to the point where, you know, it's beating the tar out of some of our favorite ones, too. It's, it's a really impressive thing and it's a testament to the folks in Brim to be able to support this. So thank you for that. Emily's going to talk about what's going on.
I just want to thank you all for the great support of the library. I hope there was enough kids and a lot of you.
Oh, honey, I can't hear you. We're on my, I'm on my microphone. Let us all know. No, come on. We're on, we're on YouTube and people may want to see you, too.
I just want to thank you all for spreading the word as well. A lot of that, a lot of our, people that come in say that they've heard about us from all of you, and that's been wonderful and we are very thankful for that. And what John did about is I don't know how many people have come through our doors. And that number, since we have opened, is 6,393 people as of July. And that is significant. And we are, we are just so thankful that we have had that turnout already from this community. And moving forward, we have some stuff planned that I wanted to let everyone know about. So during Brimfest, we will be open during our normal hours and we will have life-size games available for people to come in and play and participate. And we'll be raffling off some baskets and prizes as well. So that will be a lot of fun. We have partnered with the Lions of the Leos Club for a few community things and they've donated two benches to us already. And we look forward to some more partnerships with the Leos Club as the school year begins. And we have cultivated a wonderful partnership with the schools. The children's librarian, Caitlin, she's been doing a bi-weekly book club at the middle school up until they let out for the summer, and she hopes to plan that again. And we will be visiting the elementary school and the high school as well. And we're hoping to have some school visits from the elementary school kids once they're back in session. So we look forward to that. We will have story times coming up, rotating Fridays, Saturdays, and a special new baby story time specifically on Wednesdays. And those are all at 10:30 in the morning. We are offering an afternoon and an evening book club, and that's the second Tuesday and the second Wednesday of every month. And we have teen art club, which has been very popular. And then we'll, we're going to have some special genealogy programs this fall. So if you've ever been curious about how to start genealogy, we will have a gentleman coming in. He's well-known in Porch County and he will be doing a monthly genealogy program for the fall. So we have other stuff as well.
Do you have any dates for that genealogy thing?
Yes. So we have September 24th, October 22nd, and November 26th. And those are all starting around 5:00, 5:30.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I've been having, like, good times, not 5:00. So I mean, I have people from outside of Brimfield, so a lot of people are...
Yep, we're getting a lot of people from Chen, so that's been, it's been fun.
It's good.
Thank you very much.
You might want to make that for Black shit, Black.
We're a million officer. We need a place to post, to park the books.
Well, that's good. You guys have done a great job.
Thanks for coming.
Oh, thank you. You guys don't want to stay for this whole meeting.
Ah, I gotta take a look at that song.
Run when you can.
Thank you.
Thank you. 10 minutes. I'm, uh, I'm, uh, elsewhere. I think, uh, going there.
I made a motion that we shut the minutes. I reviewed them, signed them.
I will second the motion for the minutes on the, it's like August 7th meeting.
Okay. Can I be, uh, called?
Mike?
I'm going to say.
Sue?
Yes.
And Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. So likewise for the next two, the purchase order if you want.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase orders as presented.
Second.
Same.
Nick?
Yes.
And Sue?
Yeah. We should have...
We need a motion to add to it.
Do you want to do the agenda personally? Please skip that one.
Okay. Mike, catch me if you're asked.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented for discussion.
Second.
Any changes department has?
Okay. Ball call.
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And Nick?
Yes.
So we need more warrants.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve the warrants as presented.
Second.
Ball call.
Mike?
Same.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Okay. Tyler, you're a public county. You're, we let you answer three minutes. You, you're the first person signing in is Ellen.
Sally. Sally, Sally.
Okay. Sally.
Hi, I'm Ellen Sally. I'm with Sheets. And there is an item on the agenda later on that talks about the sign in front of the picture. Sheets were already under construction. This sign is Copper Creek. It is for a residential development further down behind us on Sanctuary View Drive. Currently, that sign sits in an island that has, it's a concrete island around it and large vehicles cannot make the turn there. They're already, like, jumping the curb. As part of our development, we are putting in a new signal and improving that intersection. And so we're looking for your guys' input so we can, so you can go ahead and terminate the agreement that's there between you guys and the sign owners. Sheets cannot terminate that agreement, but as part of our development, we want to make sure it's safe for your vehicles and your large trucks to make that turn. Plow trucks, fire trucks, delivery trucks, not just for Sheets, but getting back to, you know, all the residents back there. We want to make sure that that's a wide enough turn. And to do that, we need to remove the, the concrete island and the sign.
Good evening. My name is Diane Callte. I'm the next on the list, so if you don't mind if I'll just jump in. I work with Sheets as their land development council, and I've been in contact with Mike Glad and with Mark Godetti. And I've worked with Mark for years. I used to work at DeMerton Associates for 20 some odd years, so I know Mark very well. And I just wanted to update a few things. I took a few pictures just to kind of see what the existing conditions are out there. And you can see, if you go on Google Earth, you can see them much better, but we're, the trucks or other even probably larger vehicles are not making the turn. They're going up on the, the curb and they're also going into the island. So I have some pictures just...
All right. I'm very, for the, for the next evening, I...
Okay, there you go. So I was tasked with trying to contact the sign owner, which I have to tell you, was not necessarily the easiest thing for me to do. But let me tell you what I did and where I'm at. So the agreement that you have was signed in 2015, and it's with a company called Omni Property Companies. Tom, I think it's Tom and Pat Finley. I contacted them. I was able to go through some, some resources and contacted, I think it was Pat Finley. And he let me know that they no longer own the company. They sold it to, which you guys probably already know this, Copper Creek Lodge LLC. Totally different company. And we were able to search through the Secretary of State's website to find out who incorporated them. I knew one of the attorneys in the same firm. They put me in touch with the attorney that did the incorporation, which got us to today. We had a call with, this was after numerous emails and phone calls and an apology from Copper Creek saying, "I'm sorry to get back too soon enough." But we did have a call today. Ellen and I did with, it was David Cornluff and Lauren May.
One minute left.
Okay, so David is the managing partner. I guess I'll just jump to the end of it. They understand the terms of the agreement. They were going to try and be here this evening, but we explained to them, we don't have control over, you know, we're willing to work with them however they would like us to work with them, but we don't have control over where they put their sign. We don't own the property that Sheets is developing. It's under a lease. So we, and also we don't have control over right of way to say, "You can go ahead and put it on the south side," or whatever that might be. So we've been in contact with them. We've said that they're, we're willing to work with them. We got them some information about the meeting tonight and all the contact information for the land owner. So that is where we left it with them. We're still making the request at this point to have that agreement terminated, and we believe it's in the best interest of health and safety. Also, if I can point to fire, I haven't talked with your fire chief, but I understand there's a new ladder, ladder truck coming in.
No.
No? Okay. I'm sorry?
Incorrect.
Okay. Well, then, my understanding is that not all of your safety equipment, including plows and fire, can make that turn. So I think that's...
We know the, 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 the...
Okay. Okay.
Unfortunately, the time is up.
Okay. Well, thank you. We're here to answer any questions.
Just a more time.
Yeah, I'll give you some more time. Just, I mean, if you have any problems, yeah, my life is a problem sometimes.
Well, we'll be here if there are any questions that we can answer.
Okay. Well, we're, we're welcoming sheets.
Great.
Apparently you have the coldest energy drink, bringing my son along. So, okay, thank you for coming. Do we have any safety concerns? All good? Okay. Please, can I? Okay. Safety concern for... Well, that's just for the board. Okay. I mean, you know, we can give you the sign up. I fail to sign up. Is it, you guys okay?
You can sign up here.
Yeah, we allow people to sign up till we're done with public comments.
Go ahead. Okay. Sure. Unless you talk loud. I can talk loud.
And that you will need to just state your name and information so we can record it on this, or you could write it on there, either one of them.
My name is Alan Hilinski. Good Irish name.
Yeah, I saw it.
H.I.L.I.N.S.K.I.
And what's your address, Alan?
My address is 2424 Timber Mill Drive. That's on the corner of Copper Mill and Timber Mill. Safety concern, I, I saw one of the police officers that was in there. By the way, they do a great job controlling the neighborhood. But I said, "If you really want to make some good side bunny, have somebody sitting right there." There's, every day, I mean, every day, we're on the corner. I see this, five to 10 people just right through those stop signs. I mean, just right, and that's on a crazy hill. So I understand the visual is a little tough. And you come up towards the north, you can't see who's coming up on the other side. But if somebody, it's just like an everyday occurrence. And it used to be a bus stop right there. But there's still kids that play across the street and things like that. So that, to me, has always been a concern. I don't know what we can do. Maybe light up the stop signs or, I don't know. But really, that, that really could be an accident waiting to happen. Like I said, I just see people blowing through there. They don't even slow down. And I see the chief busy writing, writing this down, so. Okay, all right. The only other safety concern I had was, and I think, I believe I contacted you by email about the street in front of my house is sinking in. Whatever, you had to talk to our road department. Okay, I think I did email that concern and they did forward that. And they said that I got a response that they said that somebody would come out and take a look at this. Usually they just come out and they blow tar and rocks and fill up a hole. And that's great for about six months and then it's right back to where it was. Then unfortunately, if you take a look at it, and I'm no engineer, but I know when there's something sinking in, there's nothing underneath. So just, again, I see cars going out there, bouncing up and down and swerving around to avoid that, you know? And that's an everyday thing because it's right on the corner, you know? Something that really probably should be addressed. Other than that, that's all I had as far as that subject. Okay, well, thanks for coming.
And I can double check, but I believe I received your request and I think we forwarded it on, forwarded it, forwarded it on. So I'll verify the address to make sure.
I got an email response back, so, but I appreciate that.
Yeah.
That was very kind of us all.
Good. Thank you.
I don't want to be unfair, but do you have anything else to say or... You got it. Okay. Okay. That concludes that. Okay. Who's the part?
Yep, thanks, Mike. Only a couple items for you guys this evening. Just an update on our new officer hire. We are doing some initial interviews. There's been a group of those scheduled over last week, and we've got another group of those coming up next week. So initial interview phase, and as that process goes forward, I'll keep the board apprised where we're at if we have a candidate we're going to go move forward with. But that's where we're at in that process right now.
How you feeling with it?
Um, we'll see. I'll keep you posted. Other update on old business was just an update on our Dine to Donate for our Shop at the Cop program that we did with Joe's Barbecue this past Sunday. Joe reached out to me and let me know that the donation amount coming towards Shop at the Cop from that is going to be $3,000. And that was a, that was a very surprising number, and we're obviously very grateful for them for partnering with us to benefit the Shop at the Cop program. So I just want to publicly recognize Joe for that partnership for the program. So that's, that was a good thing. Under, under new business, I think Chief Moly has this noted under his report, but our officers under active shooter, did some instructors, did some training with our fire personnel over the last couple of days, and have worked with firefighters over both days. I know Craig is going to touch on this, so that's just a, an ongoing training piece for the exercise we have coming up in the fall. But that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay. Do you, Roy?
Okay. Two, five? Okay. My next just updates also. Where were we? Uh, note one there, the ambulance has been approved a few meetings ago, but it has not been ordered yet. Just, I just wanted to make the board aware of that, that I'm just waiting on the loan approval to come back from the bank yet. So still waiting on that. It has not been ordered. There was the paint overspray that I made you aware of from the construction company on the vehicles. Half the vehicles have been taken care of so far, but the other half to come.
How many, how many vehicles were involved?
Uh, nine.
Nine?
And then, as Chief Mosley said, we participated in the active shooter walkthrough that will, our active shooter training will be in October. That'll be more of a full-scale event, but this was just a walkthrough, so we kind of know what we're walking into before the October event. And then last but not least, the applications for firefighter are still being accepted until August 30th. I have 17 in total. Seven though are fully trained and the other 10 are not. So we're still optimistic we're going to get some more fully trained because that's really what I need, that's, that's along this time. So I'll let you know when. I have candidates.
That's pretty good. Many, but you did...
Yeah, I was actually surprised. I actually talked to someone at Aurora and they had eight. So...
Fire, they're fire station.
I don't know. I don't know, but I think you have more than Aurora that surprised me, so.
That's good. That's right.
Yeah, yeah. Get the best candidate we can.
Okay. Well, then, how are you doing, Adam? Thanks for it.
Yep, that's it.
Yep. So old business, just wanted to kind of close out some feedback safety school. I think we'll categorize it as a huge success. I think, big thank you to everyone who volunteered and assisted. It really was a great group effort, well-organized, well-staffed. You know, I think it's easy for people to look at our staffing there and question what was needed, but when you're looking at taking care of 51 children and doing events and they're riding bikes and doing things, I really feel that our staff came together. It was appropriately staffed. Everybody...
What's the age group?
They are entering kindergarten.
Oh.
Yes. So even the fact of, you know, we, we made the size of our bike course bigger this year. And so, you know, there were people just kind of standing around, making sure kids weren't running into cars and getting hurt. And so it's easy to look at that and think of, well, there's too many people there, but I think we can all look and say it was a huge success. Nobody was injured. Everybody had a great time. We had great feedback, very well coordinated, and just really proud of the entire team and all the departments that helped with that.
How, how long did it go over your desk?
It was nine to 12? 12, nine, 12.
And how many, how many children?
51.
Ooh.
Yeah. Yeah. Our capacity was, it was 60, and we ended up having 51. And yeah, I, everything was really, really well put together.
Did Patty come back and observe?
Patty was a cookie lady. And yeah, they handled all of that well. We had great, so what we do is they collect juice and cookies, and we do a snack with all the groups, and then all of the leftover juice and cookies go to the food cupboard and we donate all the extras. So we have plenty that the food cupboard came and picked up and, yeah, all, all together it was, it was great. Yeah. New business, so Suma Care recently sent out a letter to employees regarding a health insurance premium rebate being issued to Brimfield Township and our employees. This happened last year to, to us as well. As a result of the Affordable Care Act regulations, health insurance companies are required to spend 80% of the premiums that we pay to cover medical care expenses for their members. If they spend less, they're required to refund that money back to the employer group. And then in return, the employer is required to provide a portion back to participating employees who were enrolled in the coverage in that year. So employees enrolled in benefits for 2023 are going to receive a refund based on their level of coverage, healthcare coverage that they were enrolled in. The IRS outlines how these refunds are to be issued. Since the township pays 88% of the cost of medical premiums, we're required to provide 12% of the refund back to participating employees. So that 12% is divided among all the plan participants based on the level of coverage that they carry for the medical plan. So employees have already been notified by Suma. The money is coming from Suma in September, so we are planning on issuing those refunds in the first pay in September. Again, this is similar to what we had to do last year, so we're going to handle it the same way. Beginning to prepare for open enrollment, so we are going to go out for bid for our benefit plans just to evaluate options. So getting ready to start working on that. I am anticipating an active open enrollment this year, which means that employees have to actually enroll to continue their coverage. And the reason that we're going to do that is it's a, it's a best practice to do an active open enrollment about every three to five years because what happens is you find people who have gotten divorced or just forgot to take people off their coverage. And it happens even today. We get a call and someone's like, "Oh, I got divorced last year and I forgot to tell you guys." So it's a, it's kind of a necessary evil of everybody's got to go in, check what they have, update their dependents and beneficiaries, especially beneficiaries for life insurance. So we'll work through that process. I'll work with all the department heads and we have plenty of time, but just a heads up that that's going to be coming as well. We're beginning to order furniture for the town hall. Estimated move-in date is September 19th. We had a little delay with something that came up in the Old Town Hall, some remediation that had to be done. It was done this week, so the date was pushed back, but they're trying to get back to the original date, which was September 13th. So right now, we're scheduled for the 19th, so just start the work and coordinate getting everything we need for the town hall.
Is there any drywall anywhere up there?
Dry, it's fully drywalled with the exception of the Old Town Hall. They had to do the remediation first. That took place on Monday, and I believe later this week they'll start tackling that now, now that the remediation was done. And I will, it's been asked, I'll be coming to you guys probably the next meeting with just an update on all the change orders, kind of where we're at with, with all of that, the, the change orders, what's outstanding, what's already been approved, just to give you an update there. So you can look for that the next meeting. One of the last meetings, you guys approved the request for, to move forward on building that board meeting dais. So that's the giant table that'll be in the board meeting room that all of us can sit on for the board meetings. The wood, the wood from the Wanda House that was milled was just picked up today. So next steps is it goes to a kiln to kill any bugs that might be in that wood. So we're, we're anticipating that, that dais should be ready in early November. I'm proposing that we hold, so there should be a few weeks after we move into that building before we actually have that board meeting room completely ready for use. So I'm proposing that we just hold board meetings here until the installation of that desk and all the technology setup is complete. So with the giant dais that we'll all be sitting at, once they install that, then the technology will then be set up in that room. So I think it'd be best just to stay here. That way, we're not trying to move over there and then move out. So I'll keep you posted that that goes on, but we'd like to just stay here until it's completely up and ready.
No, I could just, yeah, stay.
Okay.
Are you, knowing that, that some of that wood is from Wanda's house? Because we're probably going to have a small back on that table somewhere.
We will. Yeah, we can do that. Sure. Yeah, whether we want it on, yeah, maybe on the front of a desk or a wall where... Yeah, whether we want it on, yeah, maybe on the front of the desk or a wall where. Right on the front, the middle, sounds good. Yeah, we can do that. We're gonna do the same thing with the barnstone that was donated for the walls. We'll have a plaque there as well. So we'll all work on those together. So we've talked about this before, the remaining wood beams, so there are full beams that are still at the mill that we need to decide what we're going to do with, because we need to get them out of the mill. So at this point, I'm, I'm looking for board approval just to move forward with pursuing selling those remaining wood beams. We've talked about getting them milled and made other furniture. I'm not sure if we still want to pursue that and finding another entity to do that. Or if, so we'll have two items that we've used with the wood. We have the kitchen table and we have the board meeting desk. But we need to decide what to do because we're gonna have to remove those beams fairly quickly. So in my opinion, I think we have two items and we sell the beams and use them for other things. But I'm looking for the board to approve one way or the other, just because we're gonna, we're gonna be in a position where if we're not, if we want to make more items, we gotta take that wood, bring it somewhere to store it, and then, then I'll find somebody else to make additional items.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion in the positive, really looking for something that I'm remaining would be, just to be a second for discussion. At this point, I think, yeah, they're gonna start running. When, when we're gonna get to making something else, we look upon that already. And as we were talking, I just wanted to create, are they still, are live your beams that need your stuff?
Yeah, I didn't want to say, speaking out of turn, but those are already all killed, right?
So they're all good?
They should have been done years ago.
No, no, just the ones you put in that they're building the, the table?
Well, they should have done all of them already.
That's all.
All, all the pile that was there. I think I seen you guys pictures of what, when I went over there, what, two months ago? Those should have already been all killed, right? So I did not know that there was still more beams at the mill still, so.
Lot of beams.
The pile you showed me today is not even close to what should be there.
So what I found, they picked up everything that had been milled and he did not want to take the beams because the scope of that project was not for him to mill additional wood. So he did feel, and if I did, he did feel that there was enough wood there, but now we have leftover beams.
There's a lot of shit, actually. There, there's more, there were more beams when I went there two months ago.
And they all there now?
Beams or wood?
Beams and wood.
Okay.
There was quite a bit more than what you showed.
Sure.
So.
So we'll, we'll figure that out, but yeah, it, it, it comes down to a little bit of urgency that we're gonna have to get the rest of that out of the current mill. And if we don't sell it, then we're gonna have to figure out where are we storing it.
Well, I mean, I think we just need to move it to start with. Do we have a place that we can store Dave? Do you have any location we can slide some of those beams?
I mean, that's not an optimal line.
It would have to be dry because again, you don't want bugs or any.
They were dry.
Yeah, they've been dried, but yeah, you don't want any bugs. You don't need, you can't have any moisture.
Because even till we sell it, we have a place to store it.
Well, I, it depends how quickly I can sell them. There is, I've, the, the individual that I even spoke to that's doing the work on the board meeting is like, there's plenty of people to buy them. So it could be a quick turnaround.
Do we have the, what we're selling, government property?
We'll have to go through a process.
Yeah, there's gonna have to be a, it's not gonna be as simple as just finding something, lots of items, sell them.
Right, I understand, but I think that even with the process, I think it can be done fairly quickly, meaning in a matter of, of weeks. And I think that would be doable.
Could some of it all, they told you how much they're worth, how much they can be worth?
You know, they've thrown out numbers. I don't know if that's true. I mean, I've heard we could get, you know, thousands of dollars just for a single beam. I don't know honestly how much they're worth that we have to go through.
How long are beams right?
They all got, I mean, they span the whole house, so eighteen, twenty foot.
Is there any way we could temporarily get them in the garage you had up there, fire department?
Possibly, yeah. I don't, I don't, I don't wanna, you can't put them in moisture, like you said, so. I was thinking, I was trying to think out loud what's in the storage unit up in the soccer field. What's in there? That's a sealed, I, I don't know, just throwing that out there.
Can you get, can we get to it, Dave, before they have to put them in there?
Is it dry?
It's dry.
It's sealed, yeah. I didn't know.
Is this a big room or a store?
Yeah, well, last time I tried.
Ah, that's great idea.
Because that's a.
I think there is stuff in there. I mean, it's one, I mean, definitely a look.
Yeah, soccer.
Dave, I'm not trying to get you a headache. I know that that's sealed, sealed unit.
Well, yeah, you ain't gonna put them in the line, so I go walk in there all the time. So cemetery is not completely waterproof. You get a lot of moisture. I have no place in my building to store anything, so.
I believe you could get a lot of money out of some of those beams.
Some, and again, I don't know if it's true, the current mill, I think indicated that for some of the biggest beams, you can get $10,000 on them. Again, can we pull that? I don't know, but that's just, we'll give her.
How many beams are there?
I think there's quite a few.
I have to look.
No, I mean.
There's a pretty big pile and the beams, yes, Craig said they're very big.
It's just the idea of.
There's how much we can, we put inside that.
Yeah.
Oh, you did, you did put.
Well, because it's got the wood floor in there though, so.
There's eight to 10 beams and then two to three pallets full of eight footers.
Well, that wouldn't be too much weight.
It would fit.
And are we storing them to later make something or storing them to decide what we want to do or, yeah, just kind of like you have to store things and then they sit there for a few years?
How hard, you've got hours in there descending house.
It's been a lot.
My, my thoughts would be just move them on.
We could save a few if we wanted to save a couple, just, you know, in case we wanted to make something. I just don't know that we need all of them. If you want to save maybe one or two, just in case.
I'm not opposed to sell them. I just feel like you were wanting to sort of piece there.
I would imagine she's putting them on the desk.
I think that's good enough. So the question being is do we want to move them to the storage unit just to get them out of that mill so we have control of them while we're trying to sell them?
Yeah, I would, you know, so they, you know, trying to find out time to get them over there and for prospective buyers, get their name realized here if we had a spot ourselves.
Move them in.
I mean, the whole thing, I hate to blow them away somewhere in 10 years, good trustees, mine all these old.
They don't even.
They have a big bonfire.
I think we just.
That's a record.
I need to prove it. We're gonna do it, let's move them on. Yeah, we all have to help it out.
Yeah.
With the person not doing the work.
So, so we got a motion in the positive, but I mean, at this point, I think.
The motion is to sell the beams, I think.
Right, right. I mean, I know you still have to do, do dealers, but I mean, we're not gonna be, something to be like mining for gold. But at least we move them on, they have a good purpose.
Right.
So, yeah, that's my motion, so.
Do you want to save any, like one of them or just do it all? Just move them all and sell?
I think just sell them all. I just think if we could have a few of the planks, some of the firemen wanted to make something for the station, not for themselves, for the station. If you guys were up there with some of those planks, I wouldn't sell them, the beams, but.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we save a couple of planks. Who knows? We might want to put something in the town hall.
One of my guys, who are good with woodwork, he would like to do that first, if that would be.
Definitely save them. Like I said, in 10 years, you're gonna find them, they'll all be there. So just stay a little while. So we don't have a discussion, you guys can enjoy it.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so it's, the motion is to sell the, you can, maybe the remaining one, okay. Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
So they're okay with something, right?
Yep, I'll keep you up to date on all that, yeah.
We need to make sure that we're all.
Finally, maybe just do that.
Yeah, we're stopping part, part over everything.
I know there's only one department in the facts.
Dave will do it.
So with the, with the upcoming move in of the town hall, our goal is to have an open house of the town hall and fire station during Brimfest. Pending any unforeseen major delays, which are completely unforeseen at this point. But following the veterans parade on Saturday the 28th, so we're gonna just work out the details of, you know, there'll be a period of time and we'll coordinate with the fire station. Some more details to come, but we're really hopeful that that'll be a great opportunity to open it up while people are here ready for Brimfest.
Well, I tell you, I heard from so many senior citizens on Craig, I don't know, which one of them in that fire station, but they loved it.
They enjoyed themselves.
Oh, yes, they did.
They had a lot of questions.
He's letting them go down the hall, but that's.
I tried to get him to, but no anymore.
So with that, just looking at things that you've done in the area, the gazebo, I am scheduled to be powder washed in the coming weeks, just with the construction and age. The bricks are pretty grimy and dark, so they're gonna be coming out to clean, powder wash that gazebo. We did also get a, I'm getting a proposal, the, all the electric on the gazebo is no longer working. We thought that it was part of the construction project, but they had the electrician come out and there's larger issues that they found. So we're gonna have an electrician come out and give us a quote because right now the lights, the outlets, none of that's working over there.
We have had that thing done so many times. And the last time they did, they had it work perfect.
Well, that was tied up with the electrical panel that sat for Brimfest to do.
Yeah, that's.
Panel, I got removed, so it wouldn't work.
Same guy, you know, that, Christmas is coming.
Yep, that's our goal. That's okay. As I said, just have it ready by Christmas. So working on it. The auditor state issued mandatory fraud reporting and training to be completed by all employees no later than September 28th. The training is an on-demand virtual training. It only takes seven minutes, pretty easy to go through. So management's working on having employees complete that and tracking the completion date. All right, next item, board approval. So looking for a motion to terminate the easement agreement between the township and Omni Property Companies, Pat Finley and Tim Finley for the privilege of the installation of the Copper Creek signage with terms of removal, with terms of removal to be agreed to by the township and Sheets.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. So Mark, that he's, he's approved in, Michael adds on.
Yeah, so you did get an update here just about, you know, initially our legal counsel was trying to allow Sheets to resolve it directly with Copper Creek, but you could hear from the attendees here that that has been very difficult and time is of the essence. So at this point, Sheets, you know, can't get the approval by the county engineer. And then zoning can't issue their permit because they don't have the county engineer approval. And then because we haven't issued zoning permits, they can't get building permits. So it is, it is becoming an urgent matter that they need to move on, on this. So we did, we have all been discussing it at length. We've had Portage County as well as the prosecutor, you know, give opinions on this. And as they said, as you guys are aware, you know, it's very difficult, especially for the road crew to get in there and plow. So in talking with the attorney, we've, the attorney feels they're at a point where it's, it's time to move forward. They've done their due diligence and at this point, we, if there were to be any concerns of us terminating this, there is enough that we have to defend if this were to try to take it to court because we're terminating the agreement. So as they mentioned, the owners changed hands. The easement agreement actually requires the parties to have liability insurance. We don't have any record of updated liability insurance. We don't have a record of a change to the ownership. So there's lots of holes in this that would solidify us moving forward and just terminating this agreement.
Right, I know, Dave, you said it's a, it's about a safety issue for you.
Right, we can't, we can't bring our plow trucks in heading south on 43 to there, or we end up holding the curb. So we have to bring everything, I'm sorry, heading north. When we come, we got a plower loop in the south. So I mean, and I have a letter from the Portage County engineers on this too, with my discussion with them, but they recommend that be moved to, so.
Does anything change about they found the owners or is that, I think it's still good down there?
It's still good, yeah. That's one of the things I asked him and, and it's like, well, back to, do we continue waiting on this? And then back to, you know, times of the essence. So even part of this and the, the language that we included in here is that as a result of terminating this, our legal counsel will work with Sheets on the removal, replacement and all the other details. So I imagine once you guys agree on the termination, all of them will come together and work on, okay, where do we relocate the sign? How does this get done? Who's, who's doing all the moving pieces, et cetera?
Will there be any discussion with the Copper Creek, is there putting another sign somewhere?
I would imagine so. I would imagine they want a sign. So that will be with the language for this motion.
To, to clarify, Deemer Associates was aware that the owners were proud and they still have the same opinion? Or is that new information since talking to Deemer?
So I'm not aware, we could ask the attorney, but I asked Mark when I talked to him this afternoon that if we heard from him in the next few days, like, should we wait? Should we? And he said, no. He said, honestly, there's enough here to move forward and support our position. So even with hearing from them, doesn't guarantee that they're gonna take any action or, you know, on, essentially they're, they're in violation of the easement agreement at this point anyways. They're not even named on the easement agreement. The liability insurance hasn't been upheld. So there's just a lot of holes. And you could ask, I'm not sure if the attorney had followed up with Mark to let, to let him know if, if, I don't know if you had a chance. I'm sure that probably just happened this afternoon. It just happened this afternoon. Yeah. He did know that I was in contact with their, like corporate counsel, attorney incorporated them, who's working to, to talk with them.
Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Are you laying your over next month? Those are huge tanks.
Yeah.
What tanks?
Do you see those?
Over the ground now.
Yeah. It's taking long. Heard that one thing, y'all know that, right?
I want to fight my guys from being all the time.
So last item on my list, just looking at our benefit plans and looking for approval to allow employee eligibility for enrollment and healthcare benefits on day one of employment instead of the first of the month following 30 days. So this is something that just even during my last year here, as we hire employees, typically when someone leaves an organization, their benefits are either terminated on their last day or at the end of the month. And so what you find is new hires come in and they have a gap, a gap in their insurance. They've started here, but they could have to wait 30 days before enrolling in our plan. And of course, that's, nobody, these days wants to go without health insurance, even if it's for a week or two. So it's a pattern I've been seeing as we brought in, you know, the handful of employees this year. And, you know, it, the, when you look at organizations everywhere, it varies. Some do it on day one, some do it after probationary period, some do it after 30 days. It's, it's different everywhere. To me, this is just one more thing of we've brought somebody in and we want to make sure they have all the benefits possible. And why not just give it to them on day one so they're not caught in a position of having to purchase other healthcare until they meet their 30 day requirement?
Makes sense.
I think a lot of companies, like years ago, you had to wait, like 20 years ago.
Yeah.
But I think most corporate companies even now start the day that the person is employed.
Yeah, it's tough. We just had a recent hire and he's gotta go out and purchase healthcare for two weeks until his healthcare, you know, starts here. And that's all well and good, but why not just make it day one and alleviate that from after day one?
I'm moved to allow employee eligible for enrollment and healthcare benefits on day one of employment instead of the first of the month following 30 days.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Nick?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And then I will go through the zoning and economic development in Mike's absence. So old business on.
You just, we're just going to put something in there. What we were talking about, we, I didn't mention that, we got that, we had three lights that are used to be stairs. We need to do up in the space, like we need stairs in there.
Well, I called Craig to find out what happened and it sounds like they got removed because they're deteriorating. So that was a conversation I wanted to have with the admin, was are we gonna put those stairs back in? Is there, what's the connection to that?
Yeah, so.
It looks goofy right now.
It does, yeah. So it was kind of.
The thing is, they used to do a lot of them, people would lock on.
Well, it's even nice when they want to walk down the sidewalk. Well, it's even nice when they want to walk down the sidewalk to the gazebo, where the fire station, there's no way to get there, they're walking in the road right now.
So, yeah, this is one where I had taken some pictures before they removed it, and I don't know what material they used, but, yeah, the steps were completely deteriorated, and it really is kind of like flat rock that was there, it really.
Slight.
It was a bit of a mess. So they put the lights in early on, and then they took the, the cement pads out of there, so the discussion is, do you want steps there, the slope of that lawn doesn't require steps anymore? I think looking back at, we checked out some very old pictures, and there were steps and a sidewalk that kind of went all the way around the gazebo and down there. I honestly don't know with the new slope of that landscaping, if you could even, you would have to cut in pretty heavily to even put steps in, because the slope is pretty, what the right word is?
Gradual.
Pretty gradual. So if anything, I would suggest we remove the lights, maybe use them somewhere else, I just don't know that putting new steps in there, there's, I don't know, I think it would be difficult to put steps there because it's such a small slope.
And you just, you can have people on that side of it, people will hide it up there. I mean, you know.
They would just walk through the grass. I mean, do you, yeah, do you.
Yeah, but when I used to have weddings, there'd be people, people.
Yeah, I almost pictured the steps being there, and then the sidewalk around it connecting to the main sidewalk for the fire station. And I think we need to look at it before we go moving the lights out of there.
Yeah, you move them like.
Because that's really, it's town center, that's like the center park, there should be some walking back in there.
You know, watch the lights going in right now, it'd be crazy to think, now we got put in somewhere else, and it's, it gets ridiculous when you can buy some stones and put something in, I don't get the sun. I mean, we're not making a motion here with the stuff.
Yeah, yeah, we would just have to look at, you know, what, right now, there are sidewalks by the road, is there not?
That's what I'm saying, connect that sidewalk that wraps around.
Yeah.
43 and 18 should go up to that gazebo and then down.
So I think the way it is now, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the sidewalk that runs along the road comes up by the parking lot in the gazebo, that's where it's routed now, and then there's a pad for like a bike rack that we'll put, and then it kind of goes over. So if you wanted to put more sidewalks around the gazebo, we would just have to get some quotes and do that, but right now that, that sidewalk loops up to the parking lot and up to.
That's what I'm saying, if the gazebo's here, you have a sidewalk stairs up, and then from the gazebo down to that pad, so that all connects together.
I have seven, so we have to do this year, we're going to start the process.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, on August 8th, zoning commission voted to keep the temporary use vendor permits to 90 days per calendar year, so there was data collected on this. One second, and I'll pull, I'll pull this up. They did pull data from other townships. One second.
It had gone to regional planning for their.
Yeah, I don't have to pull this, but they, I could send it to you, but they, they did, it did go to regional planning, regional planning provided the data to show there was only one other locality that had six months, everyone else either had 30 days or 90 days, so they did vote to keep the temporary use permit to 90 days per calendar year, and I'll find that and send it to you guys, the data that was pulled by regional planning.
Yeah, let's see that data, because also, part of that was pulling food vendors out of that temporary use permit. And was there any discussion on that, or did that fall short also because they wanted to separate those two as part of that discussion?
Yeah, so the next item is that in that scene meeting, the zoning commission voted to send the temporary use vendor street within the park district to Portage County Regional Planning for Review. So their idea is to have that temporary use allowed in park district areas, so that it limits it to those park areas, so for example, one of the examples that Mike was giving me is, you know, if Portage County opens that new giant park, it would be allowed in their area as well as our parks, but it limits it so that we don't just have temporary vendors in every permit around the township.
But that, I think that doesn't go to the, the initial question was to pull food vendors out of temporary use vendor permits, because what happens is Hammer decides to have a food truck today, then they wouldn't be in a park district, then they couldn't legally hold that, or the Hill Church decides to bring in food trucks for the back to school bash, they wouldn't be in a park district, therefore they couldn't host those there. I think they're missing, missing a piece.
So that was discussed, and I apologize, I can have Mike follow up on this, but that was one of the things that we talked about, is how would you accommodate for exactly that situation, someone wants to bring in a food truck for isolated situations for, for lunch, and I'm drawing a blank right now on, on what, how we said that would be handled, but I can make sure that he gives you guys an update on that.
Because I mean, I just, once again, I just, I have concerns that we're zoning out potential successful business opportunities here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway, you pull food vendors out, like that handles the road vendors, it handles the other businesses, but.
Yeah, and I think where they went is the data from regional planning shows that other local entities that they pulled aren't doing that either, so they were doing it to be consistent with those, but I won't have Mike follow up.
Yeah, I'd like to see that data.
Sure, absolutely. New business on August 15th, Mike Glad obtained a search warrant for the former now abandoned Comfort Inn Hotel at 4423 State Route 43, and will be executing the search on Wednesday the 28th with the Police Department, Fire Department, Portage County Building Department, and the Health District. You do have a copy of the warrant, it's in OneDrive as well. So this was really a result of some concerns, that building has been abandoned for two years, there's concerns with fire safety, the lights are, some of the lights are on in that facility, you can see that they've ripped off drywall, so in, in reviewing that, there were safety concerns, which is the reason for the search warrant. That's all I have.
Thanks, Holly. Hey, yeah.
Just a few little updates. Right now, we're working on a cobbler's pipes off the Carter 110 in a ditch area, they bought the pipes, we replaced our cobbles in the driveways, we've been doing some road mowing, plus we've been doing a lot of storm cleanup between the last few rainstorms and everything we've been getting. We met with Jaga Highway, me and Mike Collins from the county in Kirsten, they're going to come back and fix some of the spots on that Chip and Seal project from last year, some areas we had concerns with, and just to let everybody know, ODOT is working on the bridges to fix the bunks. They got Sherman Road, Road done, they're working on Sandy Lake today, I don't know when they're going to do 43, but, other than that, that's, when they appear, they're just going to go right down.
I think they're on Sandy Lake today. I think they're on Sandy Lake today.
Yeah, they're doing, once, probably once they include Sandy Lake, they'll move out to 43, because they've already done Sherman.
Doing a lot.
Yep, and other than that, who's my reporter?
Hi, I feel like a stranger, I haven't been to a trustee meeting in a month, so hi. First item, old business, summer camps have just wrapped up, we had three summer camps this summer with 37 participants, and we brought in $1,850 in registration fees, and they were really, really successful and awesome, and The Record Courier came out to our last camp last week and did a great article on us, so I'm thankful to them for that. And then I have two items for the board's consideration tonight, so the first one is, I got three quotes for siding for the community center, it is looking pretty rough, and so I am requesting that we accept the quote from Ultimate Home Remodelers for new siding for the community center in the amount of $17,750 to be paid for using the NOPEC Energy Efficiency Grant Fund.
I'm going to go ahead and make that motion.
Okay.
So, what kind of siding are you putting on?
It's insulated vinyl siding.
We're coming to that.
We're going to try to match what we already have.
Just kind of question.
So this is coming, how much is left in that NOPEC energy?
So we have a total of $61,143.33, we have a 2022 expiring balance that we have to use, which is why we're moving quickly on this one, of $13,113.33, that is part of the total.
And when you were telling me that, you said our windows are there, you did not need them replaced there?
Yes, so, yeah, we, last time we talked about this, we mentioned the windows, Cassie had a couple quotes come out too, and they looked and said, you know, these are already double pane, I wouldn't recommend replacing them, if anything, if you wanted to put some window tinting on them to block some of the sunlight, but two of the companies said they really don't need replaced. So we'll have remaining funds, but we do, as long as we move forward with this, we'll use the amounts that are expiring, so we have some time to talk about how we want to use the remaining funds.
You guys ready?
Okay. Nick?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mushen Pass.
Thank you. As soon as we can.
Are they good, are they ready to go?
Yeah. All right, and then my next item.
I'm not going to say the whole, the words.
No. Dave will put them somewhere.
We'll put them at your house.
There's not much left, there's lots of woodpecker holes in them, so. All right, and then my next item is, so the land swap has been complete at the Maguire Park project, that's all been transferred, so the next step in that project is to move the Sutton Crossing sign, which is directly in the path of the driveway. So we got one quote for moving the sign, which includes moving the land, moving or replacing the existing landscaping and the lights and electric, and the quote for that was $29,000. So what I'm requesting tonight is to get approval for fees associated with moving the Sutton Crossing sign not to exceed 29,000 with the intention that I will be seeking other quotes, just to not exceed that amount. There's a bit of urgency with this project because it's literally standing in our way of doing this project, so, yeah, we need to get that done so the project can start.
Not to exceed 29,000?
Yes.
Yeah, so we know at a minimum, that's the, the one quote we have, we know we won't pay any more than that, but.
But that costs a problem for, for other bids, if somebody says 28,000, doesn't know what to do with that.
Well, the number that we're asking is not the exact quote that was given.
Yeah.
So we, we went up on that, but we would not pay any more than the current quote. And we're, we're not putting the, well, yeah, we're not putting this out to bid, we're just asking for quotes.
Was this, maybe I just missed this in the discussions, was this discussed before when we had the land swap, that we're going to have to pay for this sign move?
I believe so.
This is, I don't remember hearing this.
Yeah, I think it was part of the whole, I, I can't swear, but I know it was part of.
It's just $30,000 to move a sign onto their property, when they, the land swap might just.
We can't put in a driveway to Maguire Park without moving the sign, that's the problem.
But we own the property now, right?
So, we own the property, but we had, I think the conditions of that were to move the sign, I believe the conditions.
That was in the contract?
I believe so.
That, that was one, I think that was one of the conditions, because we had, we had to move their signs to make room for the driveway, that's why they did the land swap, and that was part of, I know that was part of the first one of the couple meetings I made.
If I recall correctly, that was originally going to be part of the bid, but we were waiting on pricing on that, and then we decided to take it out of the bid packet and do it separately with a separate contractor.
Well, I think you should explain the condition of the sign for the 29,000, you're not thinking of just a sign, this is a brick, a, a brick-built thing.
Yeah, so their sign is, I think, cement, they have, I don't know if you have a picture handy, but it is a pretty big, I think, wood, is it a wood sign?
It's two brick pylons with a white picket fencing type thing in the back, and then it's a oval.
And it's got shrubs, right, real nice shrubs all around, it's all, really nice, but it's a heavy-duty thing, it's just not a substantial spot.
No, it's substantial, and so it's literally taking it out and re, especially because of the brick, it's just moving it to this new area and putting it back with similar shrubs and redoing that brick.
And it's a big, heavy-duty thing.
It's not, it's not just putting, yeah, it's, it's a pretty substantial bed with the signs in it.
I think it's similar to the entrance sign as you come in on the one and four things that we.
Somewhat, not quite as big, but substantial with the pillars on it, yeah, but that is, that, again, my understanding was that was the condition and the reason for the swap was we can't put in the driveway unless we agreed to do this, move the sign.
Where's that money coming from to do that?
I would have.
Since John's not here tonight.
Now, this, this project just keeps getting more and more expensive to put in a driveway to the plant, is my concern, you have $30,000 to move aside.
Well, it's two signs, they, they had, we had a, they have to move two signs that way, because right now both their signs are across from each other when you come in their entrance, so it's not just the one, they have, it's an agreement to move both of them and to keep the same look as what they had before.
So we're going to hold the property on the other one that we're moving.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, cool, we got a free park.
Yeah. You guys want to see?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen that side.
Thank you, beautiful.
Well, I can definitely, yeah, I'm going to make that motion, I mean, I'm hoping to get some other, other bids.
Yeah, and I mean, even, you know, we'll, we can always go back and let this company know that we are getting other bids if they want to change their quote, but that is not the exact number that they quoted us. Our goal is just, we do have to move quickly, so we didn't want to wait till the next board meeting to have to get approval, because we have the bids for the paving project that we're starting to run out of time on, so that's the reason we brought it this way, was we know the bottom line, but we're going to have to move as soon as we have these other quotes. Yeah.
Okay. Nick?
No.
Sue?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Um, I don't have any major business, I just want to give a little update, I know in the last trustee meetings, you approved me having a use of a, a network consultant, so I did have our first project where I had him come in to do some, some background network improvements, and that went wonderfully successful, being that no one noticed that what changes were made. And so what we, what we've done is, is the networking, the fire department slash town hall, we've made some monitoring improvements to it, so ideally, I will be alerted when there's a problem before anyone notices. All of our devices in the fire department and the town hall, when it's finished, are monitored, if one of those devices stops responding for more than 30 seconds, I get an alert, so I should hopefully know there's a problem before anyone else does, or at least I'm already working on it before someone knows. In addition to that, we took advantage of some of the newer software for our firewall to improve our backup internet connection, again, using the fire department slash town hall connection as our guinea pig, we now have a better way of monitoring our two connections and allowing for the switching of them. So in addition to the connection having to truly fail if it degrades by speed, so if our fiber connection starts to get slower, but doesn't necessarily go down, it will still switch over to the cellular connection, it's going to use whichever one is better at that moment in time, so it's not going to require a complete failure before it fails over. So that's, that's the improvement, is we added some conditions, is that, okay, every so many, you know, every so many seconds, go out and check how fast the connection is going, you know, is it, is it connecting to the things we need, if it's not, switch over to the cellular connection, and then vice versa, it'll continue monitoring that, so if the fiber connection comes back up, it switches by itself, I don't have to have that intervention. So now that it's, I've been, we've been doing that for two weeks in the fire department, again, no one's noticed, which means I'm doing a good job, I've worked with Chris, and we're going to come up with a date to apply the same changes to the police department. So, everything's going as it should, means no one's noticing it. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Jim. We have Johnson, Hirst, and Bill Chris for this business. So, is that your session, so I guess, I make a motion that we end this meeting, all for the visiting order.
You don't do the visiting order, you don't anybody talk anymore, you can not have a good evening?
Oh, you can talk.
Oh, no.
You don't open up, you don't open up before.
Yeah, I gotta come out and make more grape juice.
So, on that side, you want to come forward?
Okay, that's, um, second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, on fingers, Sue?
Yeah.
Nick?
Yes.
And Mike?
And Mike?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Seven oh nine.
I'll keep you spread.